There we go. Sorry.
Uh, Johnny Stafford here. Listeners. Krista Hallberg here. Amy Barber here. Jeff Parks.
Here.
Thank you.
I have the presentation, approval of the minutes from July 7th and July 14th council meetings. Those were emailed. Anybody have any questions?
No, make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
I have.
Any opposed? I have the approval of claims, counts payable registered July bankroll and bank account balances. Those also were emailed to the councils. Anybody have any questions?
I have a motion to approve as.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? I have a second. Uh, all in favor?
I have.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, department reports. You're the only one here, Cody. Anything of note, that anything specific?
Do you need an adage metal of bend me for all the small spoons here? About five or six of them, but really think it's definitely go right through it.
Okay. So you need replacement ones? Give me a, give me a estimate. And we'll do anything. Got all?
If we can get her to give us some dirt when we do that road down there, it'll take a lot of money on rock.
Down here?
Mm-hmm. We could get a couple of trucks load of dirt out of that big pile down there.
I'll talk to you after. They're gonna do some work on that field, so. But I probably get DNR if we can have that, probably get something with DNR.
Yeah, say your fortune, we gotta pull that whole thing, pull it up.
It's pretty dry down there, I can't even see.
Over here.
I'm talking about where you're gonna get the dirt.
I ain't coming back here, you gonna be at HSA.
Yeah.
So you guys will talk about it afterward, okay? Anything else, Sarah? Nope. All right, thank you. Um, parks and community center.
Parks, we finished the former butterfly um events on Saturday, we have the last one, we actually attached the butterflies and some confetti and craps and stuff. So that was part of the grant from United Brothers, that was our last event. Um, DNR update, they're still on schedule, they started in the second phase, the big equipment out, the smaller detail stuff now. And they put some new gravel down there by the pickleball court and smoothed that out for parking and that's one of the things happening, so. We're on track, should end in October. Um, we did get a grant from Eli Lilly through the Community Foundation, $5,000, which will pay for our five-year park plan, which we've been wanting to do here for a long time. We have one that's very old. So this will allow us to apply for a lot of other grants through the state and federal. A lot, there are several grants you can't apply for unless you have this updated park plan, so that'll help us immensely. And our next meeting is August 20th at 7:00 PM at the Winslow Community Center. And Nathan Hill from Region 15 will be there to specifically talk to us about that five-year park plan. So if anybody's interested in that and being a part of that, that'd be a good meeting to come to. What's the date of the meeting? August 20th at 7:00 PM at Winslow. The community center, we also got a grant for a feasibility study, $7,000. That was Eli Lilly money through the Community Foundation. That feasibility study is still just like another like plan, where you know, what are some of our big goals and uh things we want to do? Just so as soon as we get money, we know exactly where it's going. And also, um, the town still pays for our utilities and things, so. Um, it's just to see like how we'll be able to know exactly how much revenue we need each month to be able to self-sustain. Because that's our, one of our main roles is just for that to be self-sustaining. Our, we're getting our new floor in the small banquet room, September 8th, 9th, and 10th, they'll be there doing that. And that's money we're using for that auction money. And we did put something on Facebook about our remodel, we received $1,200 in donations. So we want to thank people for that, alumni mainly. And then we're having a big event down there September 20th for alumni, Winslow High School alumni, or any Winslow alumni. It starts at 3:00 PM, find more information on our um Facebook page, Winslow Community Center. Well, it's real, the air conditioner broke during this very hot days, so we'll have to fix it, which is kind of a big expense. So those donations are important because we're still trying to, it's good, like the donations are good, yeah, we got for things for the small banquet room, but then things like that happen. We do have other money, but you know, it's always good to have extra money for donations and stuff, so. We can keep going on that small banquet room, we're still leaving appliances and uh some, we want to put like a mounted TV on the wall so you play pictures and stuff like that during showers and wedding shower, baby shower, so always welcome those donations. I think that's it for that. Any questions? A lot of free people in the crowd?
All right. All right, um, Bill's not here tonight, nor is Steve, who comes up with them next month. Um, on to old business. Have the, do you want to read it? We'll have the second reading of the Town Council and Clerk Treasurer Election Terms Ordinance. Get it, Amy.
Okay, ordinance 2025 dash, oh, the number you mentioned. Ordinance changing the terms of the council members and town clerk treasurer and establishing staggered election times within the town of Winslow, Indiana. Whereas all five members of the town council and clerk treasurer for the town of Winslow, Indiana, were simultaneously up for election to four-year terms. And whereas this pattern of elections on occasion has caused most, if not all, of town council members and the town clerk to be newly elected at the same time. And whereas the complete turnover of elected officials has in occasion resulted in the lack of continuity of leadership for the citizens of the town of Winslow. And whereas the town of Winslow has determined it is in the best interest of the citizens of the town of Winslow to have the terms of the members of the town council and this clerk treasurer stagger to provide for the overlapping of terms and experienced elected officials. And whereas pursuant and subject to IC Code 3-10-7-2.9, the town council may adopt the re, an ordinance providing for the staggered elections. Now therefore be it resolved by the town council of the town of Winslow that in order to adopt the changes to the town code necessary to. What was that word? Effectuate, effectuate, okay. Never, I wrote this and I still don't remember that word. The implementation of staggered terms for the town council members and town clerk treasurer in accordance with applicable Indiana election law. Title I, Sections 1.02 and 1.05 are repealed and completely replaced by the following provisions. Sections 1.02, 1.010 to 1.02, 1.040, where town boards removed due to election town council members at large. 1.05, 1.010, council members and tat clerk treasurer terms. 1.05, 020, successors, and 1.05, 030, municipal election. So 1.05, 010, boy, these numbers are pain. I may just quit reading those, I'm out of here. Terms of town council members pursuant to IC Code 3-107-2.7. C1, the town council, the Winslow Town Council members and clerk treasurer of Winslow will be elected, shall serve a term of four years. The current town council members shall continue to serve in such capacity until the respective term expires on January the 1st, 2027, or until their replacement is elected during a municipal election held during a general election year. Implementation of staggered terms. An election for all five town council positions will be held during the municipal election to be held on the first Tuesday followed by the first Monday in November 2026. All municipal elections will be held concurrently with general elections. An election for all five town council positions will be held during the general election on the first Tuesday following the first Monday in November 2026. A, the two town council members elected and receiving the most votes in the November 2026 municipal general election and the town clerk will serve for four years commencing on January the 1st, 2027. Then B, the remaining three town council members elected in the November 2026 general election shall serve two terms, or two years, terms, two-year terms, commencing on January the 1st, 2027. Let's see. For elections after the full implementation of staggering elections cycles as provided in subsection B above, each duly elected town council member shall serve a term of four years. 1.05, whatever, successors. In the event that a town council member or its clerk treasurer shall for any reason become disqualified due to moving out of town limits or otherwise unavailable to complete the four-year term to which the member or clerk treasurer were elected, a successor will be selected according to applicable Indiana election laws to complete the unexpired term. In the municipal election, the town council shall consist of five individuals duly nominated and elected pursuant to Section 1.05, 1.010 of the town code and applicable town or state election laws. Each town council member and town clerk treasurer will be elected for a four-year term and at large be all the voters of the town with the exception of when the time, when the process of staggering terms is being completed. Except as otherwise provided in Section 1.05, 1.010B of the town code. Elections for town council members shall be in even years on the first Tuesday following the first Monday in November, with three town councils being elected in the municipal election in November 28th and the two town council members and the town clerk being elected in November 3030. This ordinance will not be repealed earlier than 12 years after the adoption of the ordinance. This ordinance may only be repealed in a year providing or preceding a municipal election held at the time described in IC Code 3-10-6-5 as amended from time to time. This ordinance will be filed with Pike County Clerk for election purposes. So that's it, thank you. This is the second reading. Does anyone have any questions on that? How did the fireworks get attached to it? No, we're not going to read the fireworks, we're done with them.
Okay, um, water update, I really don't have an update. We have a couple leaks. But they're fixed, all as well. Still looking into some different funding options for our drinking water project. More to come. Waste water update. We should have our new preliminary engineering report from VS very soon. And upon the completion of that, they will come to the town board meeting and present and then um submit for funding for that. New business. All right, animal ordinances. We had a, was that last month? In this month, wait, last month, we had some patrons who came to our meeting. They'd had some cats that were killed by some dogs that were running loose in town. We listened to their concerns, we read through the ordinances that were on file. We're going to talk a little bit tonight about some improvements, changes to the ordinances that we feel might be necessary to come soon. One of the things I want to mention is that we do have a leash law in Winslow as it pertains to dogs. If your dog is not in a pen or inside in a structure, they are to be on a leash at all times. If dogs stray from their yards and are seen as running loose, our animal control has power to pick them up and take them to our shelter where the owners can reclaim them and pay a fee. One thing that we'd really like to see get done in the next month. All animals within the town limits of Winslow should be tagged, whether they're inside or outside. Tags are available here at the town hall. And we will be posting soon the cost for those and the cost for the fines that are involved if you do not have your animal tagged and they get picked up. We also have quite a few stray cats that are affecting life in Winslow. I don't even know how else to say that. Some complaints from, from patrons and residents of stray cats tearing up their, their property and different things. So we wanted to bring before the board tonight for discussion the current ordinance for the feral cats and get some input from all board members on the go-forward on that. The current, Amy, do you have the current cat ordinance by chance?
Most certainly. You want the cat part?
Just the cat part.
Here's the cat part.
All right. And this is the current.
That's what we have in effect right now.
Yes, okay.
This is taking that.
Okay, so I'm going to read through this quickly. Yep, it's just two pages. The Cat Population Management Ordinance that is on the books now defines a free-roaming cat means any homeless stray, wild, or untamed cat that is at large, that does not possess an identification tag, or has not been ear tipped to indicate it is a community cat. Community cat means an unknown cat that has been captured, evaluated, ear tipped, sterilized, and vaccinated against rabies by a licensed veterinarian and released to the vicinity from where it was trapped. Community cat caretaker means a person that provides food, water, or outdoor areas of shelter to a community cat. Own means to keep, harbor, or have custody, charge, or control of an animal. And owner means and includes any person who owns an animal. However, a community cat caretaker shall not be deemed to own or keep a community cat, but rather to provide limited oversight of such animals. Number two, animal traps, requirements, and prohibitions. A person may trap any free-roaming cat in a humane manner utilizing a live release trap that does not injure the animal in order to have the cat evaluated, surgically sterilized, ear tipped, and vaccinated against rabies by a licensed veterinarian and released to the vicinity from where it was trapped. It shall be unlawful for a person to use, place, set, or cause to be used, placed, or set any leg hold trap or similar device. It shall be unlawful for a person having placed a lawful trap to fail to inspect and empty it at least once during every 24-hour period. It shall be unlawful for a person to remove any animal from any trap, not on that person's property unless such person has the express permission of the property owner to do so. It shall be unlawful for a person to use, place, set, or cause to be used any animal traps during inclement weather. Either temperatures below 20 degrees Fahrenheit, above 90 degrees Fahrenheit shall be deemed inclement weather for the purposes of this chapter. Traps set for the purposes of capturing cats must be covered to protect trapped animals from the elements. Number three, impoundment and disposition of animals. A, grounds for impoundment. Any free-roaming cat is eligible to be processed through the community cat program without hold. And B, return of a captured animal. When the owner of a captured animal is known, such animal need not be impounded, but may be returned to the owner if, in the opinion of the animal control officer, the return would not present a detriment to public health or welfare or otherwise result in violation of this chapter. A community cat shall be released where captured unless reasonable options of return have been exhausted.
That's it. So we're proposing to do away with that section on the cat management because we don't feel that it's effective, cost-effective for our town to be able to go and and neuter all those cats that are already sick anyway and that are carrying diseases as it is. And just let them, you just release them and then you're not supposed to feed them or anything. It's what the way the, the rules are for what TNR, which is trap, neuter, and release. And we've had several people say that it's, it's not feasible to do that. And there's documentation out there that that's not the best way to go, so. It's kind of inhumane to do that to a cat and then just dump it. You know, no food or whatever. So, anyway, is there anything else you want to talk about on these things?
I just wanted some input from the rest of the board, too.
Well, we don't really have enough money to be trapping, getting them all neutered, spayed, and released. I mean, you drive around town and there are stray cats everywhere, like, I mean, there's, I don't know how many around my house. And I've tried to spay and neuter, I don't have enough money to do it all. And the, the ones by my, they're pooping blood and they're, they're bald from scratching the fleece so bad. And, I mean, they're miserable things, I feel sorry for them, but I can't afford to fix them all. I mean, some of them probably need to put out of misery, but I don't, I can't do that, you know? So I feel bad they're suffering, but we, you know, we need to come up with something. I don't know, I, you know, some other towns do euthanize after, you know, you catch them after so many days, but I don't know, we need to look at cost of that or, or vet, you know, that will euthanize, but, you know, we can't. And the shelter has, she's 16 in there now, 15, 16? And she says she's totally full, she can't take anymore.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure that that's our responsibility either.
The ones that are in the shelter? Any spay and neutering and vet costs for any of the cats that are currently in the shelter is not paid for by the town.
Correct, but we do pay other things.
We pay the utilities.
The utilities.
And provides some food and litter, not all of it.
And some flea stuff.
Some flea prevention, yes.
Because if you didn't, it would be horrible.
Right.
Because if you brought one in with fleas, then everyone would have fleas every time.
Yep. So.
Well, I, I think in, in all of this, it, I'm not against people having cats and dogs. I'm, I'm not, I don't have one anymore and I'm thankful I don't have any right now, but I, I don't mind cats and dogs. But I believe that if you're going to have one, you need to be responsible with that animal or animals. And that's not, it's not fair to those that live here to have to deal with other people's animals' messes.
Or killing, for that matter.
Yeah.
And the cats are laying people's flowers and killing the flowers and the bushes. I don't own any cats either, I own a dog. But a cat has decided my front porch is a tomb. We're allergic to cats, we just, we don't. So again, folks need to take care of their cats.
Yeah, it's gotten way out of hand and whatever we decide to do, we need to do it, like whatever we put in place.
And it's got to be, yeah, not only do we make that decision, whatever that is, but then it has to be implemented.
So we know that we need to have a designated veterinarian for the town, so Amy's contacted.
Trying to work on that.
Yeah, she's working on that. Another idea that I'd had previously that we didn't get very far with, but we could maybe look a little more is maybe finding a shelter that isn't no-kill, so a kill shelter, that would um provide more inexpensive um euthanasia for us for stray and sick animals to try to cut some costs there because it is not, vets are not cheap. So Amy and I will continue to see if we can try to find some of that. But to make sure that our, our shelter is adequate for animals being held. I believe that that's also being looked at now. And I feel personally that any cat that, any cat that has a tag that somebody has paid for and calls it their pet needs to be sterilized if it's outdoors, absolutely. I feel like that's, that's fine. But everybody needs to understand the risk to that cat, that they're not protected by the town when it comes to, if a coyote comes in town and, and gets ahold of it, we can't, we can't protect against that. You know, there's, there's elements that we can't protect against. If there has been, I don't know how many cats went through the trap, neuter, release program prior to us being in office. If there have been any that have been sterilized and ear tipped and are living loose, I think we let them be. But I feel that any other cat, if it's within 31 days, you know, everybody has time to get up here that their animals, whether it's cat or dog, tag. And within 31 days, if it's a stray, that's considered a stray by the reading of our ordinance, they will be picked up and they'll have to be dealt with. I feel like that's the only fair thing we can do. And any cat that's currently in our cat shelter, I feel like we give the cat shelter, the animal shelter people the time to find them a home. She, she does have a very high success rate of getting those cats adopted out. And I think that's what we need to do. Anybody?
I would agree.
Agree.
Okay. We will have the first reading of the new ordinance then at our next town board meeting. If there are any, any Winslow citizens who have concerns about this, feel free to reach out to us. You can contact us through town hall and we will get back with you.
Um, I also wanted to bring up that we kind of put some teeth into, if we have a loose animal, loose and/or vicious animals, so we have fines in place that, that are written in this ordinance that we can use or we will use so that it helps penalize, help a dog, help a dog owner or, I don't know. Really, cats usually aren't that vicious, but helps them realize that it's important that they take care of a dog that's vicious, that's killing or biting a person or another animal or whatever.
And that, that has happened.
Yes.
And that happened, yes, and we had.
The owner has taken responsibility for that, though.
Yes. All right.
That's a nice way to put it, Matt.
That'd be, that's. Okay, on to the next, we have Darren Hubbell from SBA Disaster Relief. Thank you, Darren, for sitting through our.
I don't know if I can follow that discussion, to be honest. Honestly, I have my own very, uh, opinions about that. Probably not for your delicate listeners here. I'm sure some of us would have to bite our tongue.
Thank you.
It's, it's a problem that we have.
It is, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, do you mind if I sit while?
No, that's fine, as long as we, yeah. If you want, you're in the shot, that's good.
He can, if you pull a little bit, a little bit up, he'll be in the picture.
Yeah, I don't have a best side, so sorry. So I'm Darren Hubbell, I'm with the Small Business Administration's. So I'm Darren Hubbell and I'm with the Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. Got through that part a lot.
Wow, that's helpful.
All right, so basically what that means is the Small Business Administration has been charged by federal government to provide low-interest loans for people who have went through natural disaster. So how is that done? Governors can declare a national disaster for a state or a county of a state. Your county officials will appeal to the governor's office. Governor offices then approves that. He then appeals for it to be a federal-recognized thing, which then would enact other parts of the government, FEMA, you know, and some other mechanics that go along with flood, fire, tornado, et cetera. In this case, this is a state declaration that's in your area right now, the counties surrounding you and this county. And so these are the floods that happened the end of June, the beginning of July. So June twenty-seven to July second is the, is the calendar dates that are in between. It's a very small window. However, there are some other declarations that have been going on, you know, guys have sustained some weather in the last half a year here. And so me talking about this declaration doesn't, doesn't mean that there isn't also some other declarations that people may actually qualify for in the surrounding area. These loans actually, for a large business, can go up to two million dollars. For a homeowner, it could go up to five hundred thousand dollars for their property, garage, property, house, et cetera. For homeowners and renters, it can go up to a hundred thousand dollars for their personal property, their furniture, clothing, et cetera. It's also for agriculture and non-for-profits are included in this. And not only does it cover that, but it's also for mitigation. So for the homeowner, or if you run houses as business, you can get mitigation for your, for your homes that you either live in or run as a business, or mitigation for a business owner. Mitigation is where you build it back in a way, or build it in a way that you actually defer natural disaster from happening to your property in the future. Some people, you know, dig, you know, water, water accessways for the water to be diverted from their properties. Maybe you have a slight ditch that needs to be deepened. There's money for that. And so that's often very hard to come by through a loan any other way. You know, so the homeowner or the business trying to divert this from happening to them in the future, normally it's happened once and they don't want it to happen again. So when they're rebuilding their home or their business, the structure, they, they build it back differently. And so there's money for both building it back and building it back differently. So the mitigation is out there as well. Where does the money come from? This is tax money coming back to the people who have put it in. And so this is your government's way. I'm from the government, I'm here to help, you know? So this is your government's way of trying to create economic stability and recovery after natural disaster. What happens to certain areas, especially small towns, if a major employer, say a sneaker company is the only thing in town employing absolutely everybody and like in Hazard, Kentucky, gets, you know, two stories of mud pushed against it from the Green River on the flood, they decide to pack it in and take their business somewhere else. It's not just this family and their business that's affected now, it's three hundred people who work there and their families that are also affected. And so stabilizing the economy after natural disaster is key, but also just keeping citizens in their homes that they own and keeping the kind of quality of citizens in a community is important. And so we've seen several other places what happens when a place loses all of its real key component, community members. And sometimes it falls into disrepair with attracting people that you really don't want to live with and aren't comfortable moving into your name and noms and possessing your areas. And so we see that in a lot of places that's went through other kinds of economic insecurities. And so natural disaster can cause that as well. And so the great things about this loan, other than the value of them, is the fact that first year is interest-free and payment-free. So it's one year without paying any interest or any payment to the loan. Why does this matter? Well, if you can solve all of your issues with, say, getting other grants, FEMA, or your insurance claim finally coming through and you having haggle with your insurance company to get as much as you can, well, then that goes on top of the loan and hopefully makes you even-steven and whole, you know? Difference is, is that might take, you know, months. Some insurance companies are great and they, they work with you right away. Others take a while. In this case with the SBA, we can have money in hands in a very short amount of time. Our record is six days. Interest rates are at, for this declaration, lower than three percent. You can't get that anywhere else. And so some people will take a home equity line to try to put their homes actually together again. Well, you're not getting less than three percent, you know? It's not going to happen. So again, this is the tax money coming back. Government's not getting rich off these lumps. You know, the, that whole idea in this is making everyone whole, including the government. Stipulations on the loan, the other attractive part is they try to make it capable for everyone to be able to receive this regardless of their economic standing, based on their ability to repay and if they've not had default with a government loan in the past, or currently, I should say. If they've, I think if they've made up for that and they can show ability to pay, it's still considered. But if they're currently in default of the government loan, they're not going to back another one for them. I mean, that's logical, right? The, again, the benefit is, is that even if it's not this time, this declaration, this information, other than the specific dates that go along with this, is still good in the future. Recently in Kentucky, Mayfield, Paducah area, they had a 2021 tornado that tore through that town, killed many members. And they just kind of celebrated that again, they recognized it again a few weeks ago. And what was interesting is I was in the area talking about this very thing and memories go long, right? And so they were offered very little money for their properties at that time because this program simply wasn't available to them. And so trying to convince people that the things of the past are the past and that there's ways now, based on new knowledge, that, you know, the government has been receiving and kind of get now, is trying to keep the economic stability of even small-town USA in place upon natural disaster. So with that, that's kind of the end of my presentation. Does anybody have any specific questions?
Hopefully we don't need you.
Yeah. I would, believe me, I don't want to have this job.
Yeah.
You know, I would rather not have to have this job, you know? Unfortunately, southern Indiana, northwest Kentucky seems to be a hotspot. I don't know if that's the pole shifting, I don't know if the weather changes, I don't know what that is exactly, but it's true nonetheless. And we're seeing a lot of weather down here, so.
Good to know about that.
Yeah.
Yes, we appreciate this.
It's a, it's an air and a quiver. Somebody come and say, hey, how do I solve this problem? There's one idea.
Yeah.
The contacts there. The one thing I need to caveat on is that this declaration, if anyone should be interested in it, application deadline is the twenty-sixth of September. The idle loan that I gave you paper for, that's the economic industry development, that's for businesses, agriculture, non-for-profits that's find loss later on. Because, you know, farmer won't know that they, how much loss they may have had in their field due to flooding until they take it up, right? So that goes until next April, 2026. So it's very long-serving, which is why I say there may be declarations now for people that suffered prior.
Yeah.
All right, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here, you have to put this somewhere to find it. All right. Next on the agenda, Winslow Festival in light weight. Anything to add, Lynn?
Oh, I don't even know what to say. I tried to do the best of the last two years, at the end of the last one, I had several planning meetings, I put it out on Facebook, I put things at the post office here. I had like two people show up at one. I had a handful show up at one. And then the last two, I didn't have anybody show up, so I just quit with it. And then, I know, everybody always complains and everything, but then nobody showed up to do anything. But anyway, Alexa Evans is going to, she's trying to get vendors. We're just kind of, I guess we're going to try to do a little something. Matt's going to let us use his lot. We're going to move it back up here.
And the date of the event?
September twentieth, because, you know, the Winslow alumni are like a really strong group.
Yes.
And they're going to have at the community center and that's going to be, it's going to be big no matter what. Last year they had it, the night before the festival, the alumni had their thing and there were three hundred people there. So within the festival, you know, there was a whole lot. I think the other thing is the Monroe City now has their festival the same day and it's gotten really big, so there's just a lot. There's a couple other festivals closed. There's, there's just a lot going on that day now and everybody seems pretty set on having that third Saturday of the month, I guess it's always been, so. Yeah, if anybody ever wants to do it, they're welcome. But yeah, Alexa's trying to get some vendors and there's another thing, I can't remember. Gabby, do you guys remember that guy that was talking to you here about the two fifty? Yeah, we're making a proclamation that day.
Okay.
About the two, it's the twenty-fiftieth year of the Army. I got more details coming, but I'm working something on that. So we're going to, we're going to do that the same day of the country. We're doing something with that, so. Anybody out there, if you want to do anything for the festival, let us know or I'll put something on Facebook tonight. If you want to do it.
I would be on a camera.
So I think Alex is going to look at, because with her being uptown and they've had it up there before, she remembers several years that they had like karaoke uptown and she said, for karaoke, I was shocked at how many people actually came and did it. And it drew people to, to come in. And I remember them having music and stuff, but it does, it just, it's going to take us deciding to do it. And if we, if we're going to do it on the third week, that's fine, but we're going to have to plan ahead of time and try to do it and not a month before.
Well, people have to commit. People have to say, I'm going to do it.
Well, correct. I mean, I know I was on it at one time and, and I know we recorded and everything, but there were just people that didn't want to allow change to happen. And I think we're to that point where we can, we can do change. Change is good.
Yeah.
If people just embrace it.
Can do whatever they want. I mean, it's wide open.
So do you have them up for sure or is it up for discussion?
Yeah, Alex. Is it Alexa or Alex?
Alex.
Oh, Alexa. You know, I think I put on my phone as Alex, that's why I keep saying that. I just like automatically, what is that? Sorry. Alex, is, she's got vendors, I think she's got a few, I don't think, I know she has a few committed, so.
September twentieth, right?
Yeah, she was giving like local people a chance first and now I'll put it out there on Facebook for anybody.
I think it'd be a good idea for next year, and it's not going to be Alexa's first, that we form a committee. There needs to be a committee of people who want to be in charge and they just need to be in charge.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I heard Krista say she must be in charge of that committee.
And Alex is more than happy to be a part of that.
Have some participants.
Yes.
Well, we have to, we have to have someone from the town oversee it because we're going to get the insurance and we're going to, I mean.
Because I mean, like.
We have to have someone there.
I even see us going as far as, and Alex asked me if we could do it, of putting, doing something to where, and we have the sound system, so I don't mind loaning that out and doing that to do the karaoke. I don't mind, like, when we do the parade, to actually have them spaced enough that as they come through town, right here in Main Street, that you announce who they are.
They used to do that.
I know, and we want to get back to doing that. You want to draw people in, you get, you get high school bands and middle school or whatever, you know, grade school, middle school bands and even invite the soccer teams to come and play because if you get those kids in the parade, their grandparents and parents come and watch. They just do.
Could we move it to, not this year, could we move it to October next year where it's the times?
Well, first of all, Petersburg has their Buffalo Trace sometime in October.
That's the second weekend.
I always thought we should move it because there's so much, that Saturday, September twenty, there's like so much going on close to here.
We can discuss that later.
Yes.
But yeah, I agree that. Yeah. As far as the live parade, I haven't, I haven't heard anything.
There, there's that, to me, and we've been in it ever since we've been here, it's like it almost operates on its own.
Except those little placards. I got yelled at by multiple people, I didn't have the little placards last year.
Where'd we get them?
I don't know, I ended up.
I know.
Yes. I did the parade last year last minute because Lions and Norm didn't, they last minute, or I don't know if it was last minute, like a couple weeks before, so we got the permit, we did it, but yeah, I didn't have, I guess.
If we have a, like, if we have a place to get it from, I don't think it would be that hard to order.
It's not.
Are they stickers or what are those?
To me, it's not a necessity.
I've got one on the turn.
I know where you get one.
I've been in it every year and I don't have one for every year, so.
Says you were participating.
Well, Joey kept that one in the year.
I've done this parade several times with pageant girls.
Yes.
Did you get one?
No.
Oh.
No.
I don't know, it's a big deal.
And that's okay.
No one, no one cared that I did the parade.
I don't. Is this one in the trash?
There were one, they didn't, if I could, two, if they didn't get like the regular spot that they always stand in or something, I don't know.
Okay, yep.
So I don't want to do that again this year either. Somebody else can do live parade or.
You're sure.
I haven't heard anything about it, so I don't, I don't know if we have to do it or somebody else is doing it or what.
So what was the correlation between Lions Club and festival? Were they sponsors, you know?
Well, beautification committee, I thought always did the festival and then the Lions Club always did the parade.
Correct.
Norm Sweetmaw and the Lions Club. But then last year, the town did all of it.
Right. Because when I was on the, the committee, it was done by the beautification committee and that went like nowhere. Because there were ideas thrown out and ideas thrown out and ideas thrown out and they were all none. So I think it's.
Perhaps we need to advertise on our Facebook page for volunteers for next year, if they want to be on the committee. And try to get, get it going more earlier. And it will not have to be me.
Yeah.
You can pass it to the voters.
I don't know. I never really got to push the button.
Shut up. I'm going to back your crap.
If you want, you know, I've got a, a ton at home, if you'd like to really just go through the motion and know it's shamed it off.
I don't think I need.
Well, that's Krista's fault.
All right.
All right.
So, that's all that's on the agenda. Do we have any patron concerns?
No, we're down to two people.
Tony, do you have any concerns?
Neither one of us.
Patron, oh wait, you don't live here.
All right. Here it goes.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'm on second. All favor.
Oh dear.
Thank you. Thank you, no, we're just meeting before the regular meeting next month.
Next month, okay. So, sit.
Well, for both.
I'm snapping you, sorry. What in the world is happening? There's no end.